First time we've had a full board in a long time.
Can you cue us? Go.
Okay.
Make a motion to open the planning board meeting of September 23, 2014 at 7:43.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous for the meeting open. Before us tonight, we have Carl Kravchuk in engineering and Kim in engineering. On Kravchuk Drive, we have engineering comments and a draft memorandum of decision to be looked at and decided upon. Let's see, based upon engineering report, where did you want to address it or is it's pretty straightforward here on the... Looks like we have just some housekeeping items, letters dated today, September 23. Okay, for site prep, roadway preservation, and just some changes on the plan. A little bit on drainage. And then we have a bond amount at a... This is showing 160,000. On that. Okay.
Which needs to be updated to reflect.
He's here.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a whole page on the front that gives what Woody needs to correct.
Right. On the, on the housekeeping items, when do you think you could get this done?
Certainly this week. If you could give me a date and a half, I'll get it done and over and maybe take us a couple emails back.
Okay. Okay, and the draft memorandum of decision would reflect these changes going into it? Would reflect these changes, therefore the bond number's got to kick up right under that here. Does anybody have an estimate on that? Do you think? Okay, so we'll have to...
One each.
That's later anyway than the process. Yeah, so we'll have to address that, but the base number here is 160 will be going up from there on that. And Carl, you have some time to think about what are the three, whichever three options you want to go ahead with.
The what? The bond?
The bond, the passbook. If you do the passbook, some people prefer the passbook because they put the money in and then it just draws down as your stages are done, it gets released along the way. So if you pulled the loan and all went into there or you had it, I'd go into the passbook and as these stages are done, you go in for withdrawals and it comes out. So some people prefer that, that way you don't have to worry about it, the money's in there. So, but that's up to you, your choice. You just tell us what you want to do and we'll send you over to the treasurer's office to get that squared away.
It's an easier avenue. Say you get the drainage put in and then you do the road base and then you can ask for a reduction and then if you do the hot top to bind, you can ask for a reduction. You get money back quicker that way with that.
Okay. Has everyone seen the draft memorandum with the corrections on it? Are there any objections?
No.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the memorandum of decision as corrected?
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. Show the memorandum of decision with the corrections and the housekeeping items to be endorsed once that's completed. And the engineers will work to get the final items down to us on that, so we'll see at the next meeting.
The only other thing is that after it's the final typing, we have to sign that before.
Endorse it, yeah.
Right, so we can set up a date.
Yeah, as soon as it's ready.
Right, and then each one of us will come down and sign it to get it into hand. Hand can't accept it until it's signed.
The plan itself, you're talking about.
He's talking about the plan and the memorandum.
The memorandum.
Okay, so...
The plan can't be signed until the 14th.
Correct. So, so the, if Woody and I go back forth a couple of times this week, you guys be able to come in?
Once, once the memorandum is...
Okay.
Because it's draft form right now.
Final one.
Right.
Okay.
So we're approving it with all the corrections, now the corrections go into the decision and it gets endorsed.
So from a timing perspective?
As soon as you get it done, we endorse it, gets timestamped, 21 days.
So it could be this week?
We're around. It's a lot of work.
Get it over to you guys?
Yeah, more likely a week, I would say, right? No, you can get all the stuff banged up?
Yeah, what I saw there is all fairly reasonable.
Okay, so we'll be ready. All right.
Will I get a stamp though?
Uh, once you get the last person endorsed, terms of that. And it goes in for timestamp too, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. How's that?
We need to make a meeting date.
I believe we agreed on October 28, didn't we? The next one.
That's, that's, that's a month from now.
But we can set one in between.
Scott Green, Skip Sheehan Way, the colleagues that he's going to try to be here tonight after hearing to discuss that subdivision amendment.
Right, a minor.
I was really thinking of a public hearing for the 14th if you were so informed.
Right.
The other thing is, Kyle, Jim had to prepare a permit application and disturbance by a public hearing for that as well. We were talking earlier, that would be great to have a full public hearings, same day.
Can we do the 14th?
About 14th, can any of you do?
Okay.
Because I told the Skip Sheehan Way that we had planned on the 28th because we went through this before. He wanted to try to get it earlier.
Is he going to be here tonight?
He said he was going to try to be here after.
Okay. Carl, do you have any questions here?
Yeah, I think I heard two different things, I just don't understand. We get this done, you guys are able to finalize the memorandum. It doesn't need to be signed at the next hearing, is that correct?
No, we're going to sign it before that.
You're going to sign it before that?
Yeah.
Once it's signed by you guys?
Timestamp.
We'll get a timestamp, that's when the...
That stops the appeal.
Yeah, 21 days.
The next time I come in, with my mileage, right?
Right.
Okay.
And the hearing on the...
Correct, right.
Right, and you need to do the bond.
Understood, understood. We, we're kind of up against it seasonally wise right now, so probably unless we can get somebody that can break around 30 days, you know?
Yeah.
So it's probably spring. But, okay, you got it.
So how's the 14th?
Thank you.
14th works.
It works, all right.
So next meeting, we'll see on October 14th.
All right, then I'll post that on the 14th.
All right, are you here, Woody, for just for Scott or on Scott's stuff or just anything else? Okay. Now, on Scott's, is Skip Sheehan Way, I'm not sure what version we're up to right now, 6, 7?
Should we talk about this?
As is that, okay.
You know, the...
Hold on, the zoning board.
I, I have real problems with that because we're getting off task. We want to do too many things at the last minute. I think we can stay on task and just begin to talk to the town council. All right, too many things are coming up at that moment.
Modification? Now, is it considered a major modification? Is this considered a major or minor modification?
It's a woods decision. But there's no such thing or kind of the statute as a major or minor. See the amendment, modification, or decision.
Right, but at the last meeting, we got the memorandum from the lawyer saying that he considered it a minor and then we voted to accept it as a minor change.
Yeah. But what do you say, you still got to, still got to hold the 81W and accept it in with the change? We had to do the same thing to Mary.
I'm glad I told him he had to have a hearing on it.
Yeah, it was so old. Well, how old is this? We're getting up there, right? On the age of this thing? Because it's seven years on a live app, but then it changed, so...
About seven years is how it is on.
And where are we with this? How many years out is this thing? 10?
You haven't changed the zone.
Yeah, I'm just, how old the plan is.
Old enough.
Yeah.
That's why we require all the drainage jobs to be redone because it's almost statute change.
That's been some light of changes.
One question, Woody, did we get it across to Kravchuk that he has to have a hearing the same night?
Yeah.
He's gonna...
I will reiterate that.
Please, please do, because I don't think he realized that.
You won't be able to sign the plans because of 20 days.
Right, the appeal period.
And the town clerk will not be able to certify the period as well.
Okay. Is there anything else we have besides these two that we can fill in?
Did you want to bring any of that up?
I think here he is.
Well, yeah, there's, there's one thing. While we had a meeting with the zoning board of appeals and to go over the new bylaw and...
Was that the memo I got from Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And they seem to be bringing up a lot of new things. I think little things that can, can wait another year. I'd like to stay on task with this thing because I think we've got a lot of restructuring that the lawyer, Lisa Mead, did on that, on the new zoning bylaw. It's going to go to town council, there'll be probably some more, you know, word changes, restructuring, whatever.
Okay.
I think there's enough questions that'll come out of that, quite frankly, with, with town council. There are, there are a couple of things that they want to make sure come out that, you know, will pretty much get them away from some hard decisions and everything in a couple of areas of the bylaw. I have no problem with that, I can go to work when one's already done, another one will be done by then. But, you know, I, we just, one guy came in and he'd gotten a copy of one of the original drafts of the bylaw and he starts going into, you know, what's this, what's this, what's this, you know?
Yeah.
And it, it really digressed at that point and, you know, it kind of got out of hand.
Okay.
So, you know, and another one had some questions on the signed bylaw, which I think she's had some good questions, but it's probably, you know, something that they ought to be working on themselves since they administer that.
Yeah.
And they ought to, you know, bring that up to us. I mean, this is a thing where I felt like we've done all the work and the previous lawyer on this, Lisa Mead, has done an awful lot of work.
Yeah.
And they need to understand that. And I think right now, what I want to do is stay on task. And the task is to get a new zoning bylaw out there in front of the public with as little as you have to tell them at that point got changed, because most of it has been changed to, to legal ramifications up to this date. And the matrix, of course, has been decided by the planning board and pretty much that the lawyer. They're coming in at the very, very end here and when they do have send one person to meet with us, it seems like two months go by. It's just, you need to have, going forward, I believe, them putting together a list of things and that list of things, they should come up with pretty much how they think it ought to be written. And then we'll go over it with them.
Well, can we get...
And get it to town council. But, you know, what has happened to this whole procedure with the zoning bylaw over the years is it's just plain dropped. And, you know, the, this thing is a living document, it does not stay the same.
I was just going to say that.
Every year, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we should have at least one article. And that article can be multiple parts of the zoning bylaw. It, it doesn't have to be all one, because we found out in the past sometimes where you made three or four different articles, you know, it would hold up the town meeting.
Yeah.
So I, my, my thing is at this point, some of this definitely will get done, but some of the other stuff, I just thought we were just, you know, grinding it down into a situation where, you know, it's like, how much more of my life am I going to put into this thing?
Well, thank you for all the time. The, and I agree with you, let's, let's get the vehicle in first as it is and then it is a living document and just make the changes on the second batch going through.
Yeah.
But the first thing is to get this...
Yeah, and it's, what we'll do is, I think that there's a couple of things that I, one I already have done in a sense, I just have to, you know, get it retyped and everything and get it into, into the bylaw. Another one, I'm, I'm doing a little research on it, but I'm pretty sure I can give them what they want. But, you know, that said, I, I don't want this thing not reaching town council until the year end, I just don't want that. I want it to go to town council now.
Yeah.
And let town council get going on this because initially both I and Nancy Lewandowski wanted to send this thing when we, I was pretty much not finished with it, but a good ways along that we could have been here, section one, section two, section three, section. And we would have had some good comments back by now. And that did not, did not happen. So, I mean...
Okay, I read the notes, so...
That's my take on this.
All right, thank you for, for attending and putting all that work in it. All right, so we'll carry on.
On another note too, we also brought up at that meeting, the marijuana bylaws.
Yeah.
And they were going to check with Coleman and Page, they've had it for months and our deadline is November. And just in tonight's paper, it was in the paper about the governor not acting on it and the politicians, so whether or not Coleman and Page are waiting for any legislation, I don't know, but we have a deadline coming up in November.
Okay, that adjusts. All right. Scott? Come on up. Woody gave us a little brief here. So we've got... Yeah? Give us the quick, quick brief, we got the sheet here, so. And that, and you know, we're going to have to go through a hearing to make the change.
You weren't here, but we decided to post the 14th October.
Thank you very much.
Now, you'll be able to get the hearing notices and the paper and everything?
Absolutely, now that I know, he's all ready, he's all set with the notice list.
Okay, good. So... This the definitive? Yeah.
Yeah, I think this would be the definitive. I mean, there's things he has to do when he put a list. I already talked to the engineer tonight, or late today.
And remind me who's on this one again?
This is John Hartgrave.
Okay, okay. I think that plan and the toque would...
Yeah.
And from the old plan, you're going from a four to a...
I'm going from a four to a three.
To a three and the driveway's still relocating and...
Yeah, relocating.
From that house on sale? First one on the corner, coming out.
Yeah, but here, we'll relocate that.
Yeah.
Another thing we're going to do, in the old plan, they had the system down here.
Right.
You would have wiped out a ton of woods doing that. And I suggest, and I'm going through the expense of it, okay, I've relocated the drainage system. And it just makes sense. Now the neighbors have a lot more privacy.
Yeah.
I mean, why wipe out all the trees and everything? Never mind access and everything else, it just makes sense to put it over in this area. We did testing for that, which came and asked us to do it.
Yeah, well, it's been a while, so he's right on with that.
It worked out really well, testing came out excellent. You know, from the soils and the depth that they went and anything you want to read up. I'll put this one over here. Not much changes.
Well, I'm sure everybody's happy that it's went from four to three and the...
Yeah, I went to the neighbors too. I went door to door a little while ago, just to let them know, and wanted feedback too.
Yeah.
I got really good feedback. I had, out of all the neighbors I went to, went to this neighbor, this neighbor, this neighbor, this one wasn't home, this neighbor. I don't know if I went to that one. There was another neighbor over here, he was in favor. She wasn't.
Yeah.
And Tony was awesome, the neighbor over here. I got all excellent feedback, they appreciated me going down to three lots.
Yeah.
Basically keeping a nice buffer with everything. It just makes more sense with the property instead of trying to jam four and then. That was pretty much it. Again, change in the drainage system is probably my biggest thing on the whole plan, other than going down to three lots.
Now, do you own the property now?
I don't own the property, it was capital.
Oh, you still own it, okay.
Yeah.
So are you buying it or leasing it or what do you do?
No, it's, I'm going to end up doing it with them.
Yeah.
They asked me, they're, they're not developers.
Right.
Part of the deal was, if you want me to go in and do it, I do it my way.
Yeah.
Like, they wanted four lots. I'm like, it doesn't make, I didn't like the floor layout and stuff, it just, you're trying to put too much there and stuff. And I explained to them, sometimes it's, you're better raw, smaller's better in certain situations. And they understood when I started going through the numbers and the cost of the road and the length of the road and everything, the road shortened up considerably.
Oh, yeah.
And once, I showed them some of that stuff, they said, fine, you, you just deal with it, that makes sense, what they said, so.
Now, there was a very large retaining wall in here at some point, is that...
There is a wall, but it's not, I wouldn't call it a very large one, you mean along here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Initially, it was, it was pretty big years ago.
Oh, maybe it went, I don't know, it wasn't, it's not, I don't think it's a massive wall.
Yeah, it was bigger for one point, but, okay.
You're going to put the haze blocks there, right?
Yeah, I was going to do like a shade walk, yeah. It makes it a little more decorative than a...
Concrete pour.
Or concrete wall.
Yeah.
I thought that, Tony liked that too, I mentioned that.
In the lots, you're going to minimal clearing or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, I don't go in and clear cut. I kind of, because you can't, you know, I have to go pay to put the...
Put them back, yeah.
You know, it just takes a little extra more time and effort to...
No, I appreciate the effort. It makes no sense to clear cut.
It makes it look like it's, it's been there for a while.
Right. And the price of the average home?
I think they're going to be well into the 400s.
Okay, just a, just a comment, that was just one. Okay. All right.
Again, I don't know the market as well up here. I was talking with, they were saying four, eight years.
Sure.
They're going to have all three different flavors, they're not going to be the same.
Okay.
He should have the grade stakes put up with the center line of the road and the lots in there so that anybody can go down and walk it and look at it and neighbors too and see the layout of the road and where the house lots are.
So we're going to definitive with a hearing with the changes on an 81W, pretty much open and close if it's done.
He also has to go through the land disturbance.
Yeah, which is on the 14th too.
I talked to John on that. And I don't know, I know that was on the last plan, but he says he's at 15,000, just under the 15,000, so...
He's under, he's under 20,000, he's okay.
Oh, he's, he's well under 20,000.
How long is the road?
And I guess he took the houses into consideration, everything.
Six, four, five.
I have a cable...
Station 600 all the way around, but...
It shouldn't be 600 feet long.
Six all the way around.
Right.
Three, plus the cold set.
What scales is 20?
40.
40 scale.
What, 30, 415?
And how big are these lots, Scott?
How big are the lots?
You've got the lot plan.
Three, two plus, 30,000 square feet.
That's 31,000, 31,000, 66,000.
I would say that the work all the way out through here and down through here is more than 20,000 square feet, so you better check it.
Is it pervy, impervious surface or...
No, it's disturbed, disturbance, it's a land disturbance.
Disturbing is just shoveling.
You're on a 300 feet. It's 40 feet wide, but it's another 100, 200 feet around the, so you've got about 400 feet times 40 feet, there's 16,000 right there. And I guarantee you, you've got more than 4,000 in those whole lots.
All right, so it's, so it's anywhere you cut trees then?
Yes, any, any place you disturb it.
He was saying, I was talking to the police, excuse my ignorance, when I was talking with them today, I, he was saying, yeah, well, you know, he thought it was 15,000 was the threshold and he's like, we'll just put, you know, pervious pavement.
We ran into this before with a couple of...
It's an disturbance.
Right. You got the memorandum with the eight bullet points you need to...
I already sent it over to them too.
Okay, good.
Woody was awesome, he sent it right over to me.
Good, okay.
And we're addressing this app. He should have the stuff done, he said by Monday.
Okay.
Now, can you educate me a little bit on the land disturbance thing? What's it, a separate filing or something? I just want to do this right.
Yeah, no, no, you need to have a hearing on the...
Land disturbance bylaw is on the website.
Okay.
It's a general bylaw of the town.
Okay.
Controlled by the plan. The land disturbance bylaw is basically an erosion and sedimentation controlled bylaw to meet the NPDS requirements of EPA. It was established...
Way back.
Probably about, close to 10 years now.
It was just...
It's on the books, it's a general bylaw, nothing to do with the subdivision control.
Okay.
But it's a separate hearing.
All right, so does it need to require engineering or anything?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's get it.
Full plan.
The calculation, yeah.
So it's...
It's more for erosion control?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's all about land disturbance. And since you're not going to the con con, there's no way.
Did they even get that done for the 14th?
And you'd have to advertise a public hearing.
That's already offset, I was waiting for my phone call.
Yep, it's, remember, Scott, it's a separate public hearing.
Okay.
Because it's a general bylaw, it's not...
So it's two separate advertisements then?
Correct, same people, but...
Do those need to be addressed with certified letters too?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With return receipts.
All right, well, at least it'll be easy, he's already done one, he just duplicates.
That's right.
Return receipts means green cards.
Green card, bring it to the meeting first.
Yes, correct.
Checks to the town.
Yeah, definitive.
You want that ahead of time, bring it in for the meeting?
Bring it in with the app.
Bring it in with the application?
No, the, the material has to be reviewed ahead of time, make sure it meets the requirement.
Oh, you mean the plan? No, no, I know that.
The land disturbance bylaw, plans and erosion and sedimentation control have to be reviewed ahead of time.
Correct, well, that's why, John's going to get that over to you. I was just asking about checks to the town for the...
Yeah, for the definitive.
Isn't that for definitive speeds, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, speeds, and it comes in with the... 20, 2500, what? 20, 2500, what? So, yeah, we gotta get those checks in with the application. We don't have that either.
I'll have, I might have them cut out a little earlier if that's okay. Just to drop it off at the office over there, is that where I dropped it?
Yeah, the fees are in the sub reg book?
Okay.
Okay, and you're going straight to definitive?
Straight to definitive.
So if you look, those fees are different than if you went through the normal process.
Okay, definitive straight to, and, uh.
Review.
And then the application has to get filled out.
Mm-hmm, and review fees.
Well, I dropped out, review fees, right?
Yeah, but now you get another review.
Oh, on the, uh, so it's a separate, they cut a separate check for that? Is that for the erosion thing?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we were just talking about. Is there anything else anybody's gotta add here?
Uh, no, just make sure you put the center line in and the lots and grade stake.
Yeah, when would you like me to do that?
Actually, first.
Go anytime.
I have a question, would you guys like me to clear out the trees for the, where the roads going? That would probably help them, give them a real good idea where it's going. I have no problem with people walking on it and seeing exactly.
Yeah, no, they, they do.
Yeah, and, for the center line, yeah.
Center line?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna clear the road, I'm not doing the lots.
Yeah. There shouldn't be that much in there.
There isn't.
I wouldn't clear the road.
You can, you're violating the land disturbance bylaw.
That's right, true, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll go down, I was just trying to make it.
Stake it, yeah.
I'll stake it, I'll do the best, those trees and stuff like that, but I'll try to, I'm gonna go.
It's mostly scrub, isn't it?
It is small, it's all small brush. It's not, there's small trees and stuff.
Yeah.
And I'll take care of that, probably this weekend, I'll try to get up there. Oh, he's got a set, he, he has to go, I'll get him out there to, uh, give me my center lines, I'll mark the things up, you might get a little bit more, so people can see exactly.
Yeah, okay, just be careful, read the, read the bylaw first. So, so you got.
Oh, no, I, I understand.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so we'll see you on the 14th? Okay. Any other board business?
We've got the 14th, uh, we still wanna do the 28th?
Yeah, cause we can always use it, it's our budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have the 14th?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This looks good.
And what are you, remind Crabcheck about the hearing? Thank you.
Okay.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn at 8:15.
Okay, anybody second? All in favor, second I say an aye? Aye, show the vote unanimous. Thank you for watching.